Welcome, everyone. I think we'll go ahead and start the pre-meeting. Carlos is not going to be at the pre-meeting this evening, so we'll just go ahead and start. So David Kena will do the prayer this evening, and then we have a couple of miscellaneous items. So Chief will have some people here for the fastest car house, right? Okay. Wonderful, thank you. And then public hearing.
Sonny's out today, so he left a combination of me and Rachel. So, yes, a public hearing for a PUD plan is notable, and that there is a substitute bill, which Ryan has sent the council correspondence on. We'll go into more detail on that. It is a public hearing, and the applicants are here.
Any questions?
So on the substitute bill, so the substitute is actually old. I've talked to the property owner basically all weekend. There's a bill amendment sheet, number one, that was distributed earlier. That is a new section four, so essentially the substitute can be ignored. And we're going to want to direct our attention to the bill amendment sheet. This is agreed-to language between city staff and the property owner. We can get into more detail during the meeting. But procedurally, ignore the substitute. Let's talk about bill amendment sheet number one.
And you can walk us through that tonight, would that be okay?
Absolutely.
Any questions over here? Okay, and then we did have a suggestion that if we wanted to move the resolution regarding the UDC marker, which is the last item on the agenda, it's right now, it's number 15E. Since we do have people here to speak, that we may want to move closer. Is there any council desire to do that? So it might make sense to move it then after we do the public hearings. So after we finish number five, we'll take up that resolution?
Hey, Mayor.
After 10.
Well, we need to have the public input, too. Okay, so we'll just go through our announcements and those other items, and I'm fine with that. Okay, so we'll do it after item 10. Okay, so we'll need a motion to amend the agenda if we do that.
I just had a question.
Yes.
I've got an amendment to RS 202012, and I'm just trying to figure out what the process is and time to...
I would ask Councilor Moleman.
Yeah, so if you have an amendment to a bill, the appropriate time to bring it up is, I would say, after the public hearing, but before final action on the resolution. So you would ask for it to be approved as an amendment to the bill or a substitute.
And for our appointments, is Gail here this evening?
Gail's not here. I'll go through the appointments.
Any questions on consent? And in the interest of time, I'll just say, on the bills introduced, is there any questions on any of those? Okay, let's go on.
I overheard some side chatter. I don't know if 12E needs to be landmarked, used on a particular day or not. 12E, it's the police vehicle this budget year?
Yes, I think we'd request a suspension of the rules.
Okay.
So maybe we'll review that one, and Chief Trader will be here this evening? Okay, go over that.
Just didn't know if we could actually pass it next meeting. It's been a new fiscal year since it related to this year, so.
And maybe Wiseman, do you have anything to add at this point?
It's just in regards to, we've had several of the vehicles looked at that sustained hail damage in March. We kind of had the worst of the worst. We had 39 total police vehicles damaged. We had a review done by the insurance company for the city, reviewed kind of the oldest cars with the most significant damage, and it's a distinct possibility now. I think we're up to three of them are a total loss at this time, anticipating that there will be three additional. There will be a total loss also. But we have the opportunity now with utilizing our bid, previous bid from 2019, for the current cars that we have. There are six patrol cars available that we could purchase at the approval of the council immediately to supplement our fleet to get rid of those cars that are a total loss.
Okay, so we'll have someone prepared to request a suspend the rules on that tonight. And is Mr. Marash here this evening? Is he doing the bills? Britt, thank you. Okay, and so Britt, you'll have A, B, C, and D, so any, anything to add on those before the meeting?
I think I have a thought.
Does council have anything over here? I say over here like we're still going to go to the other room like we used to, but... Okay, and then we've done item E. So resolutions, 15A, and that's you, Britt? Any questions on that? Okay, and then item E, would that be Mr. Barron or Rachel? Senzey, okay. Any questions for Rachel on that one? And then item 16, Mr. Moleman?
Regarding the Old St. Mary's CID nominating successor directors, pushing through the development agreement.
Any questions? Item 17, Chief Schofield?
Delayed agreement with Cole County Fire Protection District. Standard state language in there. We signed it last in 2001, just updating it.
Questions? And number 12, which we will have moved to 10? I'll be right after item 10, so anyone who's joined as late as people are still coming in will take up the UDC marker, resolution 202012, after item 10. Ryan, would you like to give us a summary?
Authorizes city staff to remove the marker of OK at the intersection of Laura Drive and Fairborn Boulevard.
Any questions? And then we went over a bit that some council members may have substituted. Any questions with council? We got through the agenda. Any comments, questions? So we will start the council meeting at 6:00. It is 5:55, so we have five minutes before the meeting begins. And we still have plenty of room for distancing in here, although I will mention that across the hall, there is availability in the Boone Bancroft Room, which is directly across the hall. So if anybody would like to be even more spread out, they're welcome to utilize that room. And we do have, I believe, a television over there is going to be broadcasting the meeting so people can see and hear the meeting over there as well. Welcome, everyone. We are about to start the meeting, so thank you all for being here tonight. And like I mentioned earlier, that we do have availability in the Boone Bancroft Room, which is directly across the hall. If anybody would prefer to distance even further, they're welcome to. We do have a TV, and they'll be able to see what's happening there, so we have every opportunity for extra distancing. So before we start the meeting, we will have a prayer led by Councilman Dave Kena, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening and ask that your Spirit be among us this evening and amongst this community. We pray that you continue to guide us and give us wisdom for the many decisions we are facing. May you lead us, give us direction, and give us a strong spirit to face not only the challenges that we face, that face this community, but also for the challenges that we face in our daily lives. We pray for protection for all those that serve on the front lines for the city, county, and this country. Lord, we pray that in all we do, we look to you to be our guide. Thank you for loving us. We ask all these in the name of our nation.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, October 19, 2020, City Council Meeting. And I also want to note that we do have a call-in option. So for people who would like to phone in, the number is 404-397-1516. The meeting number is 146-274-8004, and the meeting password is 1234. We do have an additional room available for extra distancing this evening, and we ask that people maintain their distance while in council chambers. And we also have a requirement that masks be worn at City Hall. For those that cannot mask or don't, we also have the call-in option available this evening. So welcome, everyone, and I've called the meeting to order. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please. Fitzwater?
Present.
Graham?
Yeah.
Hensley?
Present.
Hussy?
Here.
Kena?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber?
Vote?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
And I want to note, Councilman Vote is joining us by phone, as you heard him a moment ago on the roll call. And he wanted me to make sure and announce that he is just engaged, the fact that he is not here for this important meeting. He is distancing this evening, though, because he has been in contact with somebody who has tested positive, so he has made the decision to remain away from people, and I would encourage that and appreciate his decision not to be here this evening, but he will be participating in voting this evening. Item 3, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
And we may make a motion to adopt it with a change this evening. So I would ask for a motion to adopt the agenda by moving resolution 2020 number 12, which is the UDC marker, to move that under, right after item 10. So is there a motion without amended agenda?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I think that was unanimous. Motion passes. So for those in the audience, the UDC, resolution 202012, so that you don't have to wait till the very end. Item 4, miscellaneous agenda items. So this is a very important item this evening, and this deals with the Mayor's Mask Up Mid-Mo Initiative. And we have with us this evening on the line some representatives from our local hospitals and healthcare providers. So I would like to welcome, we have with us this evening representatives from Capital Region Hospital. We have Dr. Haight with us on the line. We have from St. Mary's Hospital, Dr. Stewart from JCMG, and the Community Health Center, Dr. Sullivan. So we have them on the line this evening, and we are having them join us remotely because we are using that as an example that, for one, when we have an opportunity to engage remotely, that we should take that opportunity to do that. So we are being good examples of that. And so we are showing our collaboration with our health providers on this very important message. So the Mayor's Mask Up Mid-Mo Initiative, what is that? So we're all very familiar with selfie with the mayor hashtag, but we are doing a new hashtag, #MaskUpWithMayor, and we are asking people to promote that and be good examples of wearing masks in the community, and also realizing that masking is not the only option, that we have several responsibilities that we need to do. And I have our healthcare providers on the line to give us some feedback and some insight into what kind of guidance we should be following. So I will start with Dr. Haight. So Dr. Haight, you're on the line, and maybe on the line, they mute. We've got some feedback and ground notes, so if you're on the line, go ahead and mute. But I will ask Dr. Haight from Capital Region Hospital, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me, Mayor Turgeon?
We can hear you loud and clear. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. We just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that we are having a serious health crisis right now with the COVID-19, and that we, as a community, need to do everything we can to slow the spread of COVID-19. So first of all, we continue to encourage physically distancing from one another, as Mayor Turgeon has said often tonight already, and traditionally, that has been six feet or further. Secondly, it is important that we continue to wash our hands. Again, washing with soap for 20 seconds is ideal, but if you don't have access to that, then hand sanitizers would be a close second. We're also encouraging people to wear masks when they're out and about in groups, and especially when physical distancing is not possible. The masks are more helpful in protecting you from giving COVID-19 to someone else if you would have symptoms or asymptomatic. We also encourage everyone, if they're sick, to stay home and to call their physician's office for instruction. And certainly, if you've been exposed or showing symptoms, or you have tested positive, to quarantine yourself as the county health department and/or your healthcare provider instructs you to do. Just personally speaking, I also encourage people to take time, go outside and walk, and enjoy the great weather, and to get away from the TV and the radio, the Facebook and everything that is out there, just to protect all of our mental health, and be outside and enjoy the great weather.
Thank you, Dr. Haight. We appreciate your insight on that, and we will take note of that. And we also have from St. Mary's Hospital SSM, we have Dr. Stewart on the line.
Yes, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Welcome, everybody. I don't want to go back over everything Dr. Haight said. He did a very good job of stating exactly what our group, this group tonight feels is important for the community. I did want to let you know that it is becoming very apparent that COVID is increasing in our area. Just so you know, in the last six weeks, the per thousand cases, it went from about four to almost 11, and our positive rate went to 15. And I was just on an MHA call that was very important to know that our capacity to take care of ICU patients is becoming increasingly restricted in the area. Most of the hospitals have been on diversion for quite some time, off and on, especially with ICU patients. So I can't think that we shouldn't do everything that Dr. Haight says, take care of ourselves and take care of our community, and understand the flu season is upon us, and this will potentially increase hospitalizations. And I think we just need to make sure that we're all using good hand hygiene, socially distancing, and especially wearing face coverings so that we decrease the chance of we do have this spreading it to others.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart. And then from JCMG, we have Dr. Robbins.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Turgeon. I thought I would just expand on the excellent advice and information from Dr. Haight and Dr. Stewart. In regard to face masks, to really encourage people to wear them, of course, but also, when you are wearing, avoid people touching and adjusting of them. And a lot of people tend to want to pull their mask down when they're speaking to someone that they know, and of course, that's counterproductive. It's kind of an impulse, I think, people have, but that defeats the purpose of wearing the mask. The other thing, of course, that we really try to hammer home is the social distancing for a minimum of six feet, and a lot of the studies suggest that 10 feet is preferable. And finally, a lot of people seem to feel like wearing a face mask or cover of any kind is an infringement, excuse me, on their rights or freedoms. But I'd really like to remind everyone of the importance of the call to all of us for social responsibility. That is, if you're not worried for yourself, be concerned for your neighbor. That is, those that may be vulnerable to this potentially devastating disease, please consider them. You know, you wouldn't want your parents, your grandparents, or any loved one to contract this disease if you're carrying it and end up becoming very ill or even dying from it. And that's about it. That's what I wanted to really encourage people in regard to.
Thank you, Dr. Robbins. And we have from the Community Health Center, Dr. Sullivan.
Yes, can you hear me?
You may speak up a little bit louder, but I think so.
Okay, my colleagues, you know, have given great information. I just wanted to add that it's also important to remember to see your healthcare provider during this time for your normal healthcare needs. Our clinics are open, and we're taking all the necessary precautions. We just want to make sure you stay up to date on your preventive screening, things like the flu vaccine, the management of your chronic conditions like diabetes or hypertension. And we just wanted to remind everyone, you know, to please don't put off obtaining your routine care during this time.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. And from the Cole County Health Department, Kristy Campbell, the director, was not able to join us, so she has sent me her remarks. And she says, "The Cole County Health Department encourages everyone to continue to be responsible for their actions and protect others. For yourself, get plenty of rest and exercise, take your vitamins, and stay home if you are sick. Get your..." Get your flu shot to protect yourself this flu season. Adhere to physical distancing requirements and limit contact with others outside of your household. In addition to limiting social interactions, the Cole County Health Department is still strongly recommending that everyone take precautionary measures to reduce the spread of the virus. Adhere to all social distancing requirements and do not be within six feet of others outside of your household for more than 15 minutes. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, especially before eating, and if not available, use hand sanitizer. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands. Cover your mouth, nose with tissue, elbow, or sleeve when coughing or sneezing. Wear a face covering when close contact cannot be avoided and physical distancing cannot be maintained. Cloth coverings are not considered an acceptable substitute for social distancing. Interactions within six feet for more than 15 minutes will be considered exposure regardless if the person is wearing a cloth face covering. Cloth face covering should be washed after each use. Cloth face covering should be replaced frequently as consistent washing will degrade the fabric and decrease effectiveness." Cole County Health Department also has a community testing event. You can register online. The event is October 27, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. You can register at Cole, I'm sorry, health.moe.gov backslash community test. Again, it's health.moe.gov backslash community test, October 27, 9 to 5, in Cole County at First Assembly of God, 1900 SSRC Jefferson City is the address for Cole County. Also, Cole County Health Department has guidelines for safe Halloween tips. So I appreciate our hospital providers being on the line with us and showing that we are communicating a consistent message with the community together. And I think as elected officials, that we are often looked at to make these decisions and work together to get the message out to our community, and it holds even more weight when we have the backing of our hospitals and health providers. And that's why I appreciate the time that our health leaders in the community are taking. I know that we all listen to the mayor, but we really listen to our doctors in the community. So I ask you, as your mayor, to please take to heart what all of our physicians on the line have said and listen to our doctors, because we really have that expectation that these things need to be followed. And I know we've heard them time and time again over the last several months, that we have to remain diligent about this, because we want our city to remain open, we want our economy to remain open, but we all want to stay healthy during that process. So please help us and do your part, mask up with the mayor, and keep back six feet at least. I know that in our discussion with our healthcare leaders, they said, "Physical distancing is everything." Physical distancing is everything, because all these other things that we have to do, we need to do them alongside physical distancing. So please keep that in mind, and we will start to see a lot more messaging coming out, unified messaging from our health providers together. And I think we're a very lucky community that all of our hospitals are working together with us, along with our government leaders, to get this message out. So I thank them all for being on the line, and thank you for being a good example by being distanced and doing this virtually and calling into our meeting. We appreciate all of you. And on behalf of the city, we we will look forward to continuing our communication and continuing to get that message out. So with that, are there any council questions or comments at this time? I would encourage you all to participate and mask up like like our council members have been great examples of doing, and appreciate the community and the public for doing that as well. So at this time, then, we will move on, and thank you all for being on the line. We will move on to the next item on the agenda. And I also want to give a reminder that to sign up to speak this evening, Emily, where's the sign up sheet if people haven't yet? Emily has it. It's over there if you haven't signed up and do want to speak. We're going to move on to item B, and we have an exciting miscellaneous agenda items. So we have with us Roxy Van Poel to present the Stevensillers Tunnel to Towers 5K Fastest Firehouse Trophy, along with Chief Schofield and our fire department team. So welcome and tell us a little bit about this.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for giving us this opportunity. Three of the 14 members are here with us tonight. The fourth is with his dad in the hospital. So with that, I will hand it over to our volunteer coordinator, Roxy Van Poel.
Thank you, Chief Schofield. Real quickly, before we get started awarding this, our traveling trophy to the Jeff City Fire Department team again this year, I do want to mention that the Stevensiller Tunnel to Towers Foundation is a foundation that was started to benefit our first responders and military. And I also want to mention that this year alone, in the state of Missouri, the Tunnel to Towers has paid off the mortgage for three first responders' families who were killed in the line of duty. I think that's very a testament to this foundation and what they'll do for our first responders.
Thank you, Roxy. You've been involved in this every year. Now, it's in its 50th year locally, and your passion and dedication to this cause, we're very appreciative of that. And we are extremely proud of our fire department. And for those that haven't seen this in action, they are running in their full gear. I think it's hard enough to do that just without all of that on, but to see that is it's an image that is very impressive, and we're extremely proud of our fire department, and especially of your team in doing this and bringing this trophy home again, bringing it back here to Jefferson City Fire Department. So if people want to get involved, Roxy, how can they reach out to you if they want to join this effort?
We do have a Facebook page. It's at T2TJeffCity, and you can get online, go to our Facebook page, message me there. We have an email address. It's very simple also, JeffersonCity@tunnelto, the number two towers dot org. And if you send me an email, I'll be happy to respond and and get get people involved. We do take sponsorships, of course, to keep our event here going, as well as to support the foundation nationwide, and just to put on a good event every year. Next year, we'll be commemorating the 20th anniversary of 9/11. That's very important to us to make sure that our young people coming up today don't forget the sacrifice that was made by so many on that day. And we hope that we have a lot of people join us that day for not only the 5K, but there will be the fire marshal stair climb that day, I understand, as well as a parade is planned. So we'll have a lot of events in downtown Jefferson City on 9/11.
Wonderful. Well, we appreciate all your effort, and I know, did you just do introductions in the beginning, or should we just have?
No.
Okay, wonderful. If you would, each one is, and if there's anything you want to add in addition to introductions, please, we'll let you all have a moment to tell us a little bit about this.
My name's Travis Milne. I'm a firefighter in Squad Five.
Ryan Beck, captain on Squad Five.
Jake Halli, captain of Engine One.
And as Chief Schofield said, Mike Bainbridge was not able to make it tonight. His father is ill, but, you know, we send our prayers and thoughts to him and his family. And I want to, so at this time, I want to present our traveling trophy to the winning team. And and it is quite a sight to see, if you, for no other reason, don't go off to our Facebook page, but to see a photo of these guys as they came across the finish line. They were hot. They were hot. All right, and here is a medal.
We appreciate that, and that was quite a sight to see you all come across the finish line. And we are always behind you in everything you do every day in your jobs and protecting us and keeping our city safe. And we are especially proud that you're bringing this trophy back home for the fastest firehouse. That is a really big deal. We appreciate it. So we would love to get a picture if you all want to come forward, and Gail isn't here, but I don't know who may want to, Steve might want to take our picture. And does council have any any comments? That we will, congratulations.
There we go.
Item five, we have public hearings. We have Bill 202034.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson approving a preliminary PUD plan for property located at 311 Bolivar Street. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk read, this bill would approve a preliminary PUD plan for development of property located at 311 Bolivar Street. There is a bill amendment sheet that has been distributed to you by the law department in advance of the meeting. To orient you to the location of this request, up on the screen is a location map on top of the zoning map. Property is located on the northeast corner of Bolivar Street and West McCarty Street, as shown. This is an aerial photo of the property. It's property that was transferred to the current owners from the housing authority, and the owners are under a development agreement of sorts to develop the property with the housing authority. The property is also notable in that it shares an alley with Fire Station Number One. Fire Station occasionally uses that alley in an emergency capacity, and so that is a particular item of concern as we reviewed this development plan. Up on the screen is the preliminary PUD plan for development of the property includes construction of a two-story building that would be used as a combination coffee house and roastery, and then as well as the retail capacity there, and also an Airbnb-style rental residence within the structure. Now, there's two parking lots that would be constructed on the property, as shown up on the screen, the larger parking lot with access directly from Bolivar Street, and a smaller two-space parking lot with direct access from the alley that I mentioned. There's two items that have been incorporated into the PUD plan in order to try to protect the the free movement of traffic along the alley, as mentioned, sometimes in an emergency capacity. The first is the the parking lot, the two-space parking lot there, that with access from the alley is configured so as that the vehicles would not be backing out onto the alley, rather than having a typical pull-in parking off of the alley, which could possibly conflict with that access. And the second part is some additional language that's covered by the bill amendment sheet, and I rely on the law department to go through that information. This item was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of September 16. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have prior to Ryan going over the additional information contained on the bill amendment sheet.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Barron. And Mr. Momen, would you go over the amendment sheet?
Sure. So bill amendment sheet adds a section four to the ordinance, use of the public alleyway known as West Wall Way. This...
I think we have some feedback. If you're on the line, please mute. Thank you.
It's very distracting, hard to talk. Section four adds information and some requirements regarding the alleyway known as West Wall Way, and this derived from concerns of the fire department. Mr. Barron indicated that alley is used for some emergency services there at Station, Fire Station One. And so what this section tries to accomplish is essentially eliminate the use of West Wall Way for the operations of the of the business and the residents that will be installed on this site. So essentially, what it's meant to do is to prohibit the business from, you know, directing vendors to park back there to make deliveries, or, you know, encouraging customers from parking there where they come in to get their coffee. This language has been worked on and come to agree to between the city staff and property owner, I believe Mr. Shaper Cutter is here tonight. And so this is a a nice compromise that addresses the fire department's concerns about not having cars blocking or idling in that in that alleyway, and also, you know, giving the property and the business that's located on the property a certain amount of comfort that they're not going to be responsible for people that they really don't have any control over. The idea is to have restrictions, operational guidelines in this PVD saying, "You're not going to use this as part of your operations, your regular operation." So the goal is to allow the business as much flexibility as possible and to use the alleyway in a reasonable way, but not to use it in a way that's going to create blockages that could prevent the deployment of of emergency services. I believe we have Chief Schofield from the fire, if you if he needs to go into any more on their particular concerns, but we believe this is a good amendment that addresses both the city concerns and and the concerns from the from the property owner. We're confident we'll be good neighbors there.
Thank you, Mr. Momen. Any questions on the amendment? So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak, or would you want to come and start? Well, welcome, Mr. Shaper Cutter at first. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council people. Jane and I, my wife and I, have properties. We we bought this property from the housing authority as a part of a kind of an open bid process where they asked for proposals. We and some others made proposals. Our proposal was accepted, and we're delighted about that. We think this is going to be a great addition to this area. Been a lot of effort already put into this, the River Park area where Big Whiskey is. Now, Jane, I also have the the roastery of the of the coffee business that our daughter and son-in-law have is located right on McCarty Street, it's 621 West McCarty, in the gray brick building there that we've spent some time and effort to get. I hope you all can hear me.
Yes.
Time and effort to get kind of updated a little bit. The the plan here is to move the operations of a three-story coffee from that roastery building and the two places that it currently leases into a a common location. Twenty-five, 3,000 square foot building. It's, we really are excited about this and hope the council will follow up on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation and approve the request. And I do appreciate working with Ryan and our department folks and the other staff, Eric, in getting that language that's represented by the amendment. It was a back and forth, but in the final analysis, it was language that I think is beneficial certainly for the city, but also helpful for us. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Shaper Cutter. I know you've done other projects within the city and done improvements, and we appreciate that.
We love it here in Jeff City. It's our adopted home, but we love it here and are glad to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Bill 202034? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion, and we will take up 202034.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson approving a preliminary PUD plan for property located at 311 Bolivar Street.
Do we have an emotion to accept amendment sheet number one?
Go move. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we will now take up 202034 as amended with amendment sheet number one. Any further discussion or deliberation on the bill?
I just want to say one.
Officer Graham?
Like Mr. Shaver Cutter said, we did go back and forth with a lot of give and take to this. So I'm glad to see that this amendment sheet was put in there and agreed upon with both parties. There were some late night emails that was exchanged, and glad to see that we were able to work out something together that works for both parties. So thank you, and to thank you to city staff as well. So there was some, a lot of emails and went back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. Any other comments, deliberations? Any other comments, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Pussi?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Vogt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Thank you. Item six, appointments by the mayor and Mr. Momen.
Thank you. Two separate appointments. First one is our kind of more conventional appointments. Curtis Menken to the Convention and Visitors Bureau to fill out a partial term that expires December 2022.
Is there a motion to approve?
Go move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes, and we appreciate our citizens who volunteer for those positions. Item B.
Yeah, the second set of appointments tonight is to the GIS Steering Committee. GIS Steering Committee was a body that was put together in the infancy of putting together the GIS program between the city and the county. Apparently, there's some more work that is going to be taken up and improvements to the system. And so they are getting the GIS Steering Committee kind of back in order, the appointments to the GIS Steering Committee before council tonight are Hank Vogt, Bob Weber, and David Bailey.
Is there a motion to approve?
Go move. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and congratulations to them. And item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. We don't have any. Item eight, appointments, I'm sorry, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. We have our four standing committees, and the complete schedule, our calendar, is at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Do we have any committee announcements this evening? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. The Finance Committee will meet this Thursday morning at 7:30 a.m., and we're meeting virtually on webex. And directions for how to access the meeting are available on the city's calendar.
Thank you. And those virtual meetings are open to the public, and we appreciate you doing it virtual. Any other committee announcements? Item B, we have the Missouri 2021 Bicentennial Update. Before we get to that, we actually have an announcement for the county bicentennial. Monday, November 19th, there will be a ceremony, I believe, at noon, where the Cole County is going to basically turn over their bicentennial over to the state. So as we know, 2020 is Cole County's bicentennial, and then 21 is our state's bicentennial. So there will be a ceremony to make that transition over to the Missouri bicentennial, and Commissioner Sam Bushman is taking the lead on that. I'm sure he will get us more details, but please mark your calendar for November 16th. And my announcements, I wanted to announce that Jefferson City won the United Way Most Creative Hat. So if you saw the hat, the Dr. Seuss hat when you came inside City Hall, and you see those around town, and we have it up on the screen, so if you didn't get to see it, and I do want to thank Jennifer Sekanek, who works in the front office, and she is an assistant for myself and Mr. Kroll, and she does a lot of other duties as assigned. As you can see, she's used her creativity here. And it was really neat that Jefferson City won Most Creative. So next time you get a chance, take a look at it up close. She has a lot of detail on there of all kinds of areas in Jefferson City, and the J.C. Strong there, right in the middle. So she has it kind of in the Dr. Seuss style of homes. And I was very impressed with her effort on that, and appreciate her letting us really shine as the most creative. So there's still opportunities to support United Way. I know a lot of our team members, including Mr. Smith, and several of our city staff that are very active and engaged in taking leadership in United Way. So I wanted to recognize Jennifer, and we will have her come to future council meeting and recognize her in person. Also, wanted to announce that Guns &amp; Hoses was held. They held a preseason hockey match on Saturday, and Team Guns was the winner. So Team Guns is now 2-0 against Team Hoses. So it was a very good game. It was 3-2. And what they did was a virtual game, so they played, but there was no audience. So they had it streamed Facebook Live for the first time. And we hope that they do many more games. So you can go back on the JCMO Guns &amp; Hoses Facebook page and watch the hockey game. It was very exciting, and we are definitely proud of both teams. But that is certainly impressive that Team Guns won their second game. So they will have, they will defend their trophy, I believe, in the spring. They'll have another game. But the reason they're actually playing is for safety net. So I encourage anyone who finds it in their heart to want to give to that organization that really helps our police and fire, that they can go on the Facebook page and on the new website that was just activated for JCMO Guns &amp; Hoses. And please feel free to give, because since they couldn't actually have the game this year, I know that it would be very helpful if some of us would be willing to give and donate for that cause. So congratulations, Team Guns. And item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative Update. This is exciting. We do have something to report. We started our interviews for our next student liaison, and the two interviews that we've had so far have both been outstanding. And this is going to be a very difficult decision, but I'm very excited to say that we're getting closer to having a student, our third-ever student representative. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. So individuals are limited to five minutes, and we'll have a timer on the screen. And we have a sign-up sheet. So Emily will go through and read the name, and then she'll say who's next, so the person will know who's next. And then right after we're completed with presentations, we'll take up Resolution 202012. I do want to ask, is anyone here to speak on any other resolution? We do have one. Which one are you here, Mr. Shaper Cutter? Oh, it's on consent. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and take up consent? That way you don't have to listen through the entire, if you want to leave, you're welcome to. Anyone else here for another bill? Okay. Let's do item 11, Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I believe Mr. Shaper Cutter wanted to speak on the topic before the council took it up.
Okay. To speak on Consent Agenda? Okay, so-
Well, it's still technically under 10, a public comment on specific actions.
Okay. Well, why don't I welcome you to come on up first, Mr. Shaper Cutter, and then we'll take up your item, and then we'll move forward. Thank you for being accommodating.
I apologize for appearing to dominate the podium here. It wasn't my intention to do that. Maybe it's just early yet, right? Again, I'm Jeff Shaper Cutter. In addition to the property that you all just discussed and approved, and thank you very much, by the way, for that. Jane and I also have the Wardens Residence of 700 East Capitol. And on your agenda, on your consent agenda today, and I know that consents usually are anticipated, probably not to generate a whole lot of activity. But that permissive use application that is before you carries with it a mural permit that's already been approved by city staff. And I'm opposed to that mural. And let me start there before it takes all my time by apologizing. We at one time had a very active Capitol Avenue owners group that met frequently. And that organization no longer meets. And as a result, this issue was not brought before that organization. I think it would have been helpful to the council if it had been. My basic, the thing I want the city council to know is that the process that was followed here really wasn't proper under the city code. This mural that is in your packet is a $3,500 expenditure of public funds, city funds, that should have been brought to the city before it ever got to this point. It wasn't, and in my view, that is probably not proper under the city code. Further, I will say this. The idea of a cultural arts commission making its application, and it being approved by another city agency without the input of the council, especially since the city code requires council approval of public fund expenditure for cultural arts programs, is a conflict of interest, frankly. The other, a couple other points. The overlay district that was adopted by the city in 2017, after multiple discussions with owners in the area, was designed to protect the historical legacy of Capitol Avenue. In my view, this mural, whimsical perhaps, maybe even a little bit of a caricature, does nothing to enhance the historical legacy of Capitol Avenue. $3,500 for the mural, not a huge expenditure, you might say. The owner across the street from this mural, Leitrone MacIntosh, has a property directly across the street. They spent thousands in multiple of that $3,500 to restore their property to historic plus after the tornado. And Richard, in the interest of time, has authorized me to tell the council that he views that mural as a disrespect to the investment that they have in the property they own there. Frankly, it looks to me like the design here is to create a arts and entertainment district on Capitol Avenue. That's what the mural depicts and kind of markets. And frankly, again, if that's the goal of either the Cultural Arts Commission or the owners there or the city, I'd like to know about it. Because we didn't buy what's called the Marvaduk House because of the cultural arts and entertainment things that are happening in that area. We bought it because of a historic landmark that needed to be preserved. We've done that for eight years now, hope to continue. But frankly, I want to know whether the city believes that that's a historic district or not. Is it going to be a cultural arts and entertainment district? Or is it going to retain its historic nature? I think that's an important question. The permissive use that you're about to approve on the consent agenda, of all things, means that mural is going up. 68, 58 feet long, six feet, eight feet high on a wood slat fence. Marketing, perhaps, a maintenance issue without a question. That wood slat fence is already warping as I get down to 16 seconds. I want to know what the city, I'm really looking forward to hearing what the city council has to say about that mural. If that mural were anyplace else in the city, it would have been laughed at. But for some reason, it's sliding right on through on the consent agenda. Bingo. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Shaper Cutter. And I believe what we can do is pull that out specifically, even though it's on consent, council may choose then to pull that out and act on that separate.
Thank you.
And I believe, I don't have a full understanding of exactly some of the answers to the questions, but I believe that they, the Arts Commission, was preferring to enhance the area and not detract from it. But I also have a concern. I'm not sure if property owners were not notified or what the notification process is. And I do believe that even though there were some open and public meetings, that perhaps the neighbors may not have either been notified or known about it. So there may be an opportunity for us to revisit that and include more neighbors. Because I know that particular property, I believe, was tornado damaged. So I think they were looking to do something to enhance-
We, I think all the owners in that area got notice. I filed written comments in opposition to the application because I wasn't able to be at the hearing. I'm not sure if, frankly, if those comments were considered. It wasn't obvious that they were considered. My complaint really isn't with the hearing process. I think the city went through that. We got notice. We had an opportunity to object. I did. I'm not sure if anybody else did or not.
Thank you, Mr. Shaper Cutter.
Thank you.
So, Councilman Momen, it may, would it make sense, since there could be some issue to, what would be the process if that were to be revisited, or what is your suggestion?
The fence is needed, and so there's really kind of two issues here. It's a permissive right of use to have the fence on the city's right-of-way. That's a safety issue, just the structure of the fence. Behind the fence, St. Barony's old property, it's a large drop-off. We think the fence is probably needed for safety issues. However, if the city council wanted to essentially amend what's being requested tonight and say, "We approve the fence, but we do not approve the application of a mural to the fence," that would be an appropriate action. Now, the city council can just approve the fence, the permissive right of use, and allow the mural to go up. That's really kind of the issue, is whether or not the mural should be put up or not. And so that's what I see as kind of being the substantive issue before the council procedurally. Any city council member can ask that it might even be pulled off the consent agenda. If you wanted to take it up now, I think that would be appropriate. That'd be a motion to amend the agenda again. To take it up now, pretty simple, just a simple majority vote. Or you can take it up, you know, after the public comments on any other bills and figure out what the council wants to do then. It's really the council's choice whether or not they want to do it now or later.
Thank you. Councilman Ward, as the liaison, do you have any comments?
Actually, I'm not the liaison. Councilman Pussi is, but I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One being, that's a temporary fence. Is that accurate? And so if something is developed on that corner, this fence and mural would come down, correct?
From what I understand, the app or the property owner of the fence, Ms. St. Barony, essentially, it is a temporary fence that is to be there as a safety measure until the property is developed. I don't think she has a particular timeline on development of the property, and so it's, yes, in nature, a temporary fence, but the extent of that temporariness is still unknown.
All right. Another question being that this is a historic district, and the fact that we have a city code that protects the area through guidelines, to protect its historic integrity. Did this mural go through the Historic Preservation Commission? And should it have?
I do, thank you. Mr. Baron's going to address the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. One moment as I pull my notes out on this subject. Yes, so murals are regulated by Chapter Three of the city code, the Advertising and Signage chapter. There's a process for approving a mural, an administrative, staff-level process where a property owner can apply for a mural permit, and that goes through an administrative procedure, a hearing. We send out notices to surrounding property owners, very similar to a planning and zoning notice, except the administrative hearing is literally the department director ruling on whether the findings for murals were met and approving the mural permit. There's not a whole lot of room for a content-based review of a mural within that process. It's more of a review to make sure it's not an inappropriate type of painting. And I'd leave Ryan to describe what inappropriate means. But outside of that, it's not really a content-based procedure. Fortunately, in this case, though, the application started with the Cultural Arts Commission, where such types of review can take place. And then, yes, it did go to the Historic Preservation Commission for review because it is contained within that overlay district, and there's a requirement that it be reviewed by that body in that case. The fence that was put up was put up basically as a direct result of the tornado and the removal, the demolition of those buildings as a safety measure. I don't think at the time it was known that the fence was going on the right-of-way, but the City Building Regulations Division did issue a permit for a temporary fence. That fence would come down upon development of the property, which we knew would be years off, but not a terrible number of years, to our understanding. We did conduct a mural hearing where the, after that hearing, as the testimony is given, there was a review of that, and then a permit is issued for the mural. But it is on the right-of-way, and that is a condition contained within that permit that it receive a permissive use of right-of-way, which is an action that would be undertaken by the city council. And I hope that's a fair review, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions? We have a couple of, Fitzwater and then Councilman Graham.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Could you go back through and reiterate what the rule of council is then in murals? Is it basically this comes through on a consent- Does it basically just comes through on a consent agenda, and we can say yes or no? Do we have some input into what that mural looks like?
Well, it's a little odd in this regard, and I might have to rely on Ryan very, very quickly here. My understanding is that it's, you're ruling on the permissive use of right of way with a mural being in it, would be an obvious item for your review. If the mural were on private property, you would not have a review. It would be an administrative procedure.
Well, that raises another question, and maybe this is a different situation. When we were going through the discussions on the building at 202 High Street, and there was some discussion that as that wall was built, there was going to be provisions for stucco side that possibly could house a mural at some point. I asked the question of who would have the final right of decision on what that mural looks like? Is that a different situation, or would that go through the same?
So my understanding is that is a very specific legal language that was inserted in order to address that very highly visible intersection, which seems appropriate in my mind, considering how visible that intersection is. I would rely on Ryan.
All right. The situation over at 200 East Side, really kind of a one-off situation, where the right to install a mural on that wall was specifically reserved to the city. And because the city council acts for the city, they would be the decision-maker on whether or not to install a mural on that particular piece of property. That's not a particularly good analogy for this situation. That was kind of a result of a disagreement on that particular situation.
Well, I just want to clarify the process on that particular.
Councilman Hesse?
I just had a question about the fence that was put up. Does the city own the fence?
No, it was put up by the private property owner. And as I mentioned, it was issued a permit, a temporary permit, largely as a safety measure. As Ryan mentioned, the fence is needed. There's a very large drop-off. It's on the property owner.
But is the fence still in good condition?
I'm afraid I can't testify as to the condition. I don't know of any issues there.
I was told that there are some issues, but we'll take it.
As a piece of private property, it would be subject to our, you know, property maintenance inspections and upkeep. So if there are problems, you know, certainly within the city's discretion to make sure that those are taken care of.
Councilman Ward? Regarding funding, I believe we approved five hundred dollars for all of our commissions. And this is thirty-five hundred. Is this, and Councilman Hesse may know this, is this coming from the Cultural Arts Foundation? Or is this actually city-funded? I don't know if you know or.
I can't say with certainty if it was Parks and Rec or the foundation.
The contract for the thirty-five hundred dollars with the artist was executed by Director Spalding, so that tells me that that is Parks and Recreation funding that is within his
Councilman Schreiber?
The fence is owned by the property owner, but it's on the city right of way, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, was the property owner a member of the Cultural Arts Commission?
I believe, yes. I do not serve as a liaison to the Cultural Arts Commission, so I don't have a whole lot of room to answer questions on that.
The property owner then was the individual that requested that this be placed on the fence, or was that the Cultural Arts Commission? It seems more like there might be a conflict of interest somewhere.
The property owner did sign, was a participant in the application for the mural in the administrative capacity, going through the administrative hearing, so.
And did that property owner, was that the person that actually signed off on it?
I believe it was, I'm afraid I'd have to check.
Well, I think there's potentially some issues, though, that we might need to look into a little bit more.
I do recall attending this meeting virtually, and I believe the applicant abstained from voting. Is that helpful information?
Councilman Hesse?
I mean, I'll just say, I think there's some issues here. I don't want to get into who made this motion, conflict. If there's some work that needs to be done, let's do it. But Cultural Arts Commission is a group of people who are dedicated to art and this community, and I certainly don't want to have statements made here tonight that sort of imply, you know, something underhanded taking place or a conflict of interest. Now, I look at it and say the item on the agenda is related to the permissive use of just the fence, period. If we need to revisit the mural piece in that process, I think we could do what Councilor Mollman said earlier, pass the permissive use, but not maybe restrict the ability to paint that mural and get into this a little bit more. You know, the Cultural Arts Commission is a group of people dedicated to improving, you know, public art in this community and looking for opportunities to do so. That's a commission that's spent quite a bit of time working on this, but I certainly think that if we're going to have questions or want to dig into this a bit more, then we owe it to the property owner and the Cultural Arts Commission to make them aware and give them the opportunity to answer questions or speak for themselves as well, so.
As a liaison, would you like to suggest that to take it back to them, Councilman Hesse?
Well, I don't know if it's about taking it back to them or this group needs to figure out what it wants to do, but I think we could certainly split this off the consent agenda this evening as a separate item and address it to say that we approve the permissive use of the fence on public rights of way.
Yes, and then I would add the caveat that reserve permission to install a mural until further action.
And so I guess if that needs to be in the form of some sort of motion at this time, I would make the motion to match with Councilor Mollman, City Attorney.
And I would second that.
So we have a motion in second to pull Item B or to change it according to what Councilman Hesse has noted. Any questions? We have our motion in second. Any further discussion? Why don't we do a roll call?
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Motion passed, and that did include A, C, and D, correct, on the consent? Right? I was taking up everything but making a change to D? Or you had B separate?
I was pulling B off.
B separately?
That was my intent, was just to pull B separate.
Okay.
If you need a motion for the rest of them?
Let's do a motion for A, C, and D on consent.
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so A, C, and D are passed on consent, and B has been modified. So we have everything we need, Councilor Mollman.
Sounds straight to me.
Okay. Now we will have Item 10, Presentations from the Gallery on Specific Bills or Resolutions. So Mrs. Donaldson has our list. So welcome to come to the podium, and she reads her name, and she'll say who's next up, and every speaker will have five minutes.
Carl Landwehr is listed first, and Chuck Laimeyer following Mr. Landwehr.
Mayor Turgeon, men and women, Council, I want to first tell you how much I appreciate the opportunity to once again appear before you and share my thoughts relevant to this educational marker. I also believe that it's extremely important to thank all the participants in this discussion who have participated with great respect and decorum as we debate the wisdom of this historical marker. It really does boil down to an interpretation of history. I believe, as I said, it's an educational marker. Perhaps some of you have heard my story. As a little boy, I came by this marker numerous occasions and was intrigued by who was Price, what's it doing here nearly in the middle of the street? And that led me to come to understand the Civil War. And then, of course, to learn more about slavery, a barbaric practice that we, I'm sure all can agree. This understanding has led me, I should say, did lead me, as a student at the University of Missouri in the early 60s. I was a member of an all-white fraternity, and a young man wanted to be a member of that fraternity who was black. Myself and other brothers were compelled by the importance that this young man could provide to our fraternity, and wanted his admittance. I'm very pleased to say that we prevailed, and it was the first time in the history of the University of Missouri that a black student was admitted to a white fraternity. I am equally proud of my point of view, Ben, as I am now, as I stand before you, speaking in favor of leaving this historical marker as is or modified. I believe Mr. Barnes, my friend for many, many years, and his constituents have a different And you see, I think, and interpretations, there just doesn't seem to be a right or wrong I will say that Mrs. Coleman and I, although I've not spoken with her, I believe that she and I agree on two important items, two important considerations, and that is the end of racism and prejudice. And it's my belief that this educational marker can do for many as it did for me. If I lived during the time of Thomas Hart Betten, as he was painting the murals, while many in the community would disagree with me, I would stand for Thomas Hart Betten. He painted what he saw: the lynching, a brothel, a train robbery. I'm a purist in my belief about art and about history. I submit to you, men and women of the council, Mayor Turgeon. In Berlin, in Germany, they're debating the wisdom of restoring parts of the Berlin Wall. Not to contain or restrain people, but at least they not forget what took place when Germany was divided. There's also extensive debate still occurring about Dachau. There are those who are so disturbed by it, they want to destroy it, but they did not. Least they remember. I believe the course of action today should be one of deliberate prudence. I'm not compelled by any reasoning I've heard thus far that we need to rush. Let's get it right, for the sake of history. For other little boys and girls who come by a moment in their life and say, "What is that?" They will learn. I will close by giving you a piece of PR history.
You're at five minutes, so if you could wrap.
I will. The theme of Silver Dollar City. We have a great past ahead of us. Let's don't destroy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Next up is Becky Ambrose, and then Bob Pretty.
And Mr. Laimeyer?
I listed him first. I don't, I guess he's not here anymore.
Oh, Mr.?
No, I said Mr. Landwehr was first. I'm assuming he is not here.
We just had Mr. Landwehr. Did you say Mr. Laimeyer?
Landwehr, Landwehr, and then Laimeyer. Next up is Becky Ambrose and Bob Pretty.
And we have Mr. Laimeyer here, so we'll have Mr. Laimeyer next, and then we'll have Mr. Ambrose. Thank you.
I would be happy to hear it from you. I'm Chuck Lawmeyer, not Laimeyer, but I live at 6319 Rolling Road. I'll try to speak directly here, so you can hear me through these masks. I have trouble hearing some of you, hearing aids. First, I would like to endorse the mayor's mask-up initiative as I was hearing it. This is a wonderful gesture. I'm an advocate of masks. I consider wearing a mask a civic duty and indeed a patriotic duty. So more power to that effort. This monument, though, is why I come to speak, and I learned of this monument when I was still a teenager. I had an assignment from someone to go visit this monument and find out what it was. Now, when I say I was a teenager, we're talking 65 years ago. So when I went on Morro Drive and found the monument, and I said, "That's fine, something historic occurred here." I had no opinion about it one way or the other, but I always kind of fondly remembered the monument. And I spoke to Councilman Schreiber the other day and got his opinion on the monument, and at that time I would say I was still rather undecided about my opinion of what should happen to the monument. Since then, I've heard some very eloquent speakers speak in favor of removing this monument, among those being Bob Pretty and Jay Barnes. And Mr. Barnes had several articles in the newspaper. So I've been won over, and I believe this monument should go. And I would make the observation that we white people seem to have a lot of nerve to tell the African-American community what they should like or what they should accept. We weren't the ones enslaved, so I would listen to the black community. I've visited the monument again about three months ago, just to see what it was, what it said. And rather poignant was a piece of paper lying there. I don't know who placed it, but it said, it was a quote from W.E.B. Du Bois, and it said, "Monument is dedicated to the memory of those who fought to preserve slavery." So I think I'll leave it at that, and I would just urge the council to do the right thing and vote to have this monument removed.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Becky Ambrose, and then Bob Pretty.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Becky Ambrose, 1001 Fairmount Boulevard, Jefferson City. I live one block from the monument and have for 35 years, and we've never had a race problem in our neighborhood in the 35 years we've lived there. We all get along. We have a very diverse neighborhood, great neighborhood. But I wondered if you all knew that in 2013, we were placed on the National Register of Historic Places, Morro Drive Historic District. That was done through a lot of work from our neighborhood that begins at Fairmount and Chestnut, Hillcrest, all the way down Fairmount to Morro Drive, up to Amarin and Vineyard, and also down and around Fairmount Court. This monument sits in the middle of a national historic place on the National Register, and I've never heard anyone address that issue. I'm not sure whether you can just walk in and remove something that is in. We worked hard to become that because we are on documents, so people know when they come to Jefferson City, we have a historic district neighborhood. And there's descriptions written about every property that you can read about. It's very detailed. So number one, I don't know that it can be done without interfering with the national historic district that we are in. Number two, I have never heard what the plan is to replace it. I have heard the comments about how this monument was moved, but nobody ever said why. The monument used to be, in 19... The monument used to be, in 1933, if you go up Moro Drive and around that Greenberry Curve, instead, if you went over the hill to the right to Moro Heights School, the New Moro Heights School, there's a wide place in the asphalt. That's where the monument stood. In 1955, they built, we call it the New Moro Heights from 1955, and school buses couldn't get around it. So that's why it was moved several blocks down to that triangle where our street bears into Moro Drive. Still, you know, Sterling Price, it doesn't say anything about where he stood or anything like that. It's just designating the area. You know, it's Jefferson City. They didn't fight. So I wonder, you know, I've heard lots of people banter, we'll replace it with something else. Well, I wonder if this is going to be like the Convention and Visitor Bureau or the Convention Center in Jefferson City. Once you tear it down, how long is it going to be before we do anything? And by then, it will be forgotten. And at least now, when people say, is there any history about the Civil War in Jefferson City? You can say, yes, go read that monument. We had a battle that never happened, and Sam Bushman wrote a great research article in Sunday's paper about the details of the battle that never happened. I think it's a shame to tear it down. You know, we've offered to have it redone. I'm not sure. I think you better check first whether you can go into a national historic register place and tear down a monument. That's all I have. Thank you.
Bob Purdy, and then Pete Edding.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I've been conflicted since the meeting of the Public Works Committee a few days ago about what to say tonight, and there are several things I want to say, so I'm going to hustle right through them. Because at the end, I want to talk about why it's important because of something that happened at that committee meeting that left me very, very angry. For the first full council, let me, let me first recap a couple of the things I said at the meeting. We have talked about some of the philosophical arguments for removing this monument, but the arguments that I think that are most compelling are the words of the people who speak from life experience in dealing with this, and the words that they use to describe this marker. You might have heard them painful, fearful, disruptive, hurtful, a symbol of hate, among other words that you probably heard at that meeting. These are people who have lived their lives under the shadow that this marker casts over part of our city and over them. I don't think I emphasized this enough when I spoke to the committee the other night, but I hope this city council will not tell those members of our community family that this is something they should just ignore. It's not really that important. Just get beyond it. Don't think about it. Clearly, this is not going to work. It's not a serious problem. It is a serious problem, and I'll get back to that later. For those who say installing a second sign here, a second educational sign that would tell more about the Price siege, that would solve absolutely nothing. And I'd be interested to know what the proponents of this idea would say on that sign. Because if you're going to say more about the battle and what it did or didn't do, then there's no reason to have the first sign there to begin with. Until the Public Works Committee meeting, I was thinking that we might be able to turn the negative into a positive by taking this rock and this sign out to the Wallendorf House and using that as a marker with a new plaque on it to designate this house, which now has no sign at all that tells anybody why it's there and what it's all about. That it's in that house that General Price surrendered any thoughts of capturing Jefferson City and taking it back to the South with him. So that would, that would stand the UDC's idea on its head, but I don't believe that anymore. As far as marking other sites, there are groups of community leaders from several organizations, including the historic city of Jefferson, who are now discussing establishing a series of historic markers throughout our town that tell our story. Far beyond what this one does, and I hope this city and this council will support those ideas when the time comes. The Mellon Foundation is pledging $250 million nationally for the next five years to provide markers of this kind. Perhaps this would be something that would help fund that effort. But getting back to the present marker, my anger about this marker, that what happened at that committee meeting has only grown. I no longer believe in relocating this thing out to the Wallendorf House, not after I heard Jackie Coleman read a letter at the committee meeting. A brutal vicious letter written by a gutless bishop, a bigot, a gutless bigot who did not sign his name. He used the word nigger 13 times. He called her a nigger in this letter. He finished up by saying, I don't belong to the KKK, but you're an example for why it should exist. Painful, hurtful, fearful words and all the other words. It wasn't signed. Bigotry and cowardice and anonymity sleep together. The discussion of what to do with this marker and comments by Jackie and others about how this presence has affected their lives has led to an exposure and an example of the worst that we can be in our town. And I don't believe this coward represents our city, but he has graphically shown that there is a very ugly side to this discussion. And in showing it, has shown why this marker should be removed. Symbols have meaning, as has been said before, and our city should not actively or passively endorse a marker on public property that can engender this kind of hateful comment aimed at a particular individual or a particular group of individuals. I don't think I can describe to you how angry I became after that committee meeting the other night and how I feel about that letter and what it says about my town and your town. That is why I support removing this marker. Because it not only stands for an unwelcome past, but it stands for an ugliness that is present slightly beneath the surface. And I hope it's only a very small part of our city. Removing the marker is not just a mechanical act. It will be a statement that hatreds of another time will not be tolerated today in our town, not today and not ever. So I ask you to please give strong support to this resolution. I'll answer any questions anybody has.
Next up is Pete Edding and then Thomas Mott.
Hello, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I'm Pete Edding from Jefferson, Missouri. First, I'd like to mention a story about the Ottoman Empire present day Iraq. A cemetery was destroyed containing the graves of British soldiers who had fought there in the First World War by ISIS. Now I'd like to go to Cuba, Havana, with Havana Harbor. In Havana today, there is still a monument to USS Maine that blew up in Havana Harbor in 1898. That monument is still there. Then I'd like to take to you to November 4th, 1863, Vicksburg, Mississippi. In Vicksburg, Mississippi, there was a shared monument for both Union and Confederate soldiers. And across the United States, there are both shared monuments in the United States for Union, Confederate, Indian, white settler, or settlers. It amazes me that we are becoming less tolerant than a communist regime and going to like ISIS, turning to that mentality. For a young man who is disheartened and saddened by the monument and a street's name in Jefferson City, maybe he shouldn't try to align himself with activists, lobbyists, warrior lawyers, politicians. Why doesn't he do something like join the police department, pin on a badge? Or how about becoming a United States Marine? An infantryman? Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thomas Mott and then Vic Crackers.
I appreciate the opportunity to address the council and the mayor. History's not pretty in a lot of ways. Civil War, at least my knowledge of the Civil War, what I have studied, was not solely about slavery. About 1% of the participants fighting for the CSA were slave owners, about 1%. Three top states for Civil War battles, number one was Virginia. Number two was Tennessee. Number three was Missouri. We had some bloody fighting in this state. I look back just a few years ago, and I have a lot of respect for Elliot Davis in St. Louis Channel 2 Fox News. I've met him not recently, but I've met him in the past, talked to him a few times. Just a few years ago, the INF mayor of St. Louis thought it'd be a good idea to take down the Confederate monument in Forest Park, very tall structure, very beautiful structure. I used to ride my bike by there. Used to look at it all the time. Well, Creason, the mayor, thought it'd be a good thing, good thing for the city of St. Louis. It would help it heal. So she decided to get it removed, and this council of St. Louis approved it. I believe it's being stored now for thousands of dollars a year at Jefferson Barracks. But Elliot Davis spoke out about this quite often, how wrong it was. And look what, look what's happened to St. Louis. I don't think it's helped any. And throughout the country, there's been an assault on history. And even Lincoln's monument has been defaced and attacked. So right behind you is Thomas Jefferson. He's been attacked at the University of Missouri to be removed. So where does this madness stop? I, I, I ask you to, to keep the monument in place. History's not pretty, but keep it in place. So when you give in to this madness, what is next? Changing the name of Jefferson City? And what's next after that? The law enforcement, the fallen law enforcement people? Take that down? You know, where does this madness end? And you look back, and my father fought the Nazis. He's got a Bronze Star in the Battle of the Bulge. But when Hitler took power in the 30s in Germany, he took, he and the Nazis removed a lot of history, a lot of Jewish history, a lot of things. So I hate to see us do this. And I, I beg of you to not remove this monument, but keep it in place because history is not pretty. Look at the massacres that were done to the American Indians. I mean, there's a lot of things in our history that are not good, you know, and we're not proud of, but it's history. And I'm, I'm just really distraught what's going on in our country, taking these monuments down. And it's just a terrible thing. And, you know, you learn from history. But I just, I just don't know where this madness, so if you give in, please make a stand. And if you do vote to keep it, I don't think it's, you're being a racist. I mean, that word is used way too easy today. I mean, everything, somebody is, you know, something like this, oh, you're a racist. Now, that word is used way too easy. And you know, the Civil War was a terrible thing for this country, but it's part of our history. So I appreciate your time, but please, thank you, if you vote to remove this, what is next? Jefferson City? Remove, changing the name? Thank you.
Vic Crackers and then Steve Happy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I echo sort of his comments also about what is next. But I believe we should have had the plaque or the wording here tonight so we could refer to it. So, you know, most people, I can't recite it, but that's, that's a little bit different to what I had to say. I just believe it is a bad decision to remove a benign, what I consider to be a benign informational plaque, which is part of our history. I believe it sets a bad precedent and will not appease the removal revisionist opposition. And as he said, what is next? You don't have to agree with history, but history is what it is. So, you know, I just would encourage you to leave our history as is, and it's an example of what happened. And I don't, I don't see the, I don't really understand the opposition or see what's extremely offensive about it. Thank you.
Steve Happy and then Jan Schumacher.
Mayor, city council. I'm going to slow this down for just a second. There. I read a sign on the way into Jefferson City belongs to Central Bank. Words on it are very clear. When we say strong roots, we mean it. That goes back to the history. They've been here for a long time, and they're playing on it. Well, for them. I'm being quite clear that I am in favor of the monument staying there. I remember when it was out farther out where now Moro Heights School is. I played on it then when I was younger. Then I went down on Moro Drive. I played on it then when I lived on Elmarine. I don't see moving it, how it's going to change anything. The blacks and the whites always have a little differences. I have very many, I won't say, I shouldn't say many. I have quite a few good black friends. My first black friend was, I was in eighth grade with, up through eighth grade at IC Church until he went on to another school. That was my best friend. My wife's sister was the first white woman to graduate from Lincoln University, which I also attended. If we work at it to try and get along, we can all get along. That monument doesn't mean a whole lot of things. It does not honor Sterling Price, which I might add is my great-great-grandfather. And I can't say that I'm proud. I'm truly, I've read bits and pieces about him, but it never meant a whole lot that to me. My grandmother did. But we need to think about what we're doing. I think the monument should stay right where it is. It isn't hurting anything, and the people, we need to put all this behind us and try and get along with one another. That monument moving isn't going to do that. That's just going to draw up ill will and a lot of other things. As for, well, I won't go into all that, but it amounts to the same thing. We need to try and get along. So leave the monument alone, right where it sits. Been there for a long time. It doesn't say anything about, like I said, honoring him. It just states a fact. And there was an article in the newspaper written by, I believe, Nicole Thompson. She said it was a lie that he said if, when it was beautiful, that he wouldn't attack the town. My grandmother and mother told me years and years and years ago that was the reason why he didn't want to attack and destroy Jefferson City. The homes that you could see from the southern part were Nick Monaco's house, the one, the large house on Greenberry Road where he stayed in the basement of, and a few other ones. All the wooden ones are gone. But those are still standing. We ought to have some part of history left. Thank you.
Jan Schumacher and then Jay Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I have been in correspondence with you, but I also wanted to make a couple of follow-up comments to remarks from this evening. A couple of points in specifically is concern about revising history and changing history. The ironic part of that is that the UDC, the fathers of the Confederacy, actually did that. Their intent was to rewrite history to favor the Confederacy and to support white supremacy. That's clear in their documents, then well documented. So I think they already did revisionist. We're just fixing that problem. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then these comments of what has been done in Germany and other places, and I just wanted to reference that. I had the solemn occasion to visit Dachau a number of years ago when we were in Germany on a vacation. It's a dreadful place. It was just horrendous. But you didn't see any, you didn't see Hitler. You didn't see any of the German leaders being glorified. You saw the result of what had happened. And then we also, that happened to be the same year when I was in Germany, when the Berlin Wall had come down that previous November. So we got to see, actually, we got some pieces of the wall ourselves. So I've seen that experience as well. But they're not putting up symbols of communism or communist leaders if they're wanting to recreate the wall or a portion of the wall for history. So I think you have to see who are you glorifying? What are you showing? I think showing the sad aspects and the reality of it is one thing, but to glorify those that lost or those that were the perpetrators of evil is not acceptable. that lost or those that were the perpetrators of evil is not acceptable. And the other thing that I hear a lot is what's next? You know, it's a slippery slope. Well, the fact is, what makes this unique compared to the name of the city or other such things, is this was put up to promote white supremacy. That's what the UDC did, and that's why this is hurtful to black Americans and black residents in our community. And I think it's, for us as white people to say it's not racist really doesn't, is a one-sided position, because we don't have the same backgrounds to be able to really assess how it, how it affects us. So I just wanted to kind of clarify those. Obviously, I'm in favor of removal of this, and I think it will bring healing because we are taking a stand against racism. And also, as he had said about the letter to Jackie Coleman, which literally made me sick to my stomach, she's my neighbor, and I was just horrified that someone could write a letter like that to her and other black people in the community. So clearly, there is racism here, and we need to do what we can to fight against it. So I'd appreciate it, vote in favor of the resolution.
Jay Barnes and then Mark Kiefer?
Jay Barnes, 715 Twist Highway. I want to make three, say three things. First is the slippery slope and the straw man are rhetorical, rhetorically illegitimate kissing cousins. I've heard a lot of slippery slope and straw man arguments today and throughout this from the opposition. Want to talk about what we're really talking about, which is this rock and not other things. The second thing is what everyone here agrees upon. There is no one here who wants to erase history. What we've proposed to the City Council is not just to remove this rock, but to replace it with three, four, or five markers celebrating our city's true history of the Civil War. When Mr. Eddings says that we're erasing history, we've actually proposed to quadruple the number of Civil War markers in the city. I don't think anyone in the opposition has taken account of that fact. And I would hope that the folks who are opposed to removing this marker, if they're serious about wanting to respect history and not erase it, that they will work to put up new markers that tell a true history of our community in the Civil War. And I agree with the previous comment about, is this going to be like a convention and visitors bureau? Which, if you take it down, is it, are we going to wait 20 years? I certainly hope not. I should, I don't think we should be waiting that much, that long at all. And then finally, I want to talk about false equivalencies and some of these things that I've heard tonight. Thomas Hart Benton did not paint the mural in the House Lounge because he sympathized with the Lynchers. The return of sections of the Berlin Wall are not being put up by neo-communist in Berlin. And the gas chambers at Dachau, Dachau, are not preserved because of Germans who claim, like the UDC did, that they need to preserve the memory of the Third Reich because the Third Reich was right and should never die. I heard some skepticism, or I sensed some skepticism when Ms. Schumacher said that the UDC's purpose was to rewrite the history of the Civil War. This is not something that's debatable. It's in the founding documents of the United Daughters of the Confederacy. It's in the documents of the United Daughters of the Confederacy here. And it is clownish for people to pretend that that rock was put up for a historically accurate purpose. Get over yourself. You can't go back and rewrite what the UDC wanted to do in 1933. They were very open about their motives. They put it in writing. They had members and cross-membership in the Klan. Does that make everyone who wants to preserve history a racist? No, heavens, no. But does it mean that the city probably ought to look twice at this gift that it got in 1933, when the UDC had power in this community and so did the Klan, when the Klan had a sheriff in this community? I think the city ought to say, you know what, the year is 2020, it's not 1933 anymore. And we should all celebrate history, our true history. Put up more markers. Celebrate the Iotan. If this was the, if the UDC marker was what the city wanted to celebrate, why isn't Sterling Price on the city's seal? Why is the Iotan on the city's seal? The Iotan's on the city's seal because this was a union city. Nobody's proposing to take it off that seal. No one's proposing to take Thomas Jefferson away. No one's proposing any of this nonsense about what is next. Nothing is next. To my knowledge, the UDC didn't put up any other markers in this community. "The arc of justice is long, but it bends towards justice." I've mangled that quote because I didn't look it up before I got up here. Tearing down that marker is not going to solve all the world's problems, but it just might be a cathartic moment for our community to reject the hatred that was present in the group that put it up four score and seven years ago. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mark Kiefer and then Dick Dalton?
I'm Mark Kiefer, the pastor of Living Hope Church, and this is my wife, Nina. We are soon to be the residents at 411 East Ashley Street. I would like to remind the Council of another bit of writing in public space, which is in the Pecapalor Orunda, where the first half of Proverbs 1434 is engraved, righteousness exalts a nation. I think that also applies to a city. They didn't have room to put the second half of the verse. But sin is a disgrace to any people. We are in favor of the removal of the marker. We believe it is a disgrace because it highlights the oppression. It highlights the lack of respect for justice and human dignity that the UDC promoted. And so I would say that we have an opportunity as a city to get it right. The quote that Jay Barnes was referring to was spoken by Martin Luther King on March 31st, 1968, at the National Cathedral in Washington DC. And I believe it goes, "The arc of history is long, but it bends toward justice." And I believe this is an opportunity for our city to get it right. If we don't get it right, eventually, it will be gotten right. It's 87 years since the monument was erected. It's 156 years since the events commemorated took place, and we have an opportunity at this moment to exalt righteousness and be done with the disgrace that has hurt our community for that long. Thank you.
Dick Dalton and then Nimrod Chapel?
Mayor, Council members, attendees. Jay may not want me to apologize for him, but I'm going to. We each are entitled to our beliefs, and for us, they're valid. And we don't have any particular business calling someone else's belief nonsense. So I, I think you're entitled to your belief, whoever you are. And I guess I should say Jay's entitled to his belief that it's nonsense, but I think you get my point. A few things. First, I'd like to do a little role play with my granddaughter, a second grade. We're walking by the monument. What's that, grandpa? Oh, it's a, it's a plaque, it's a plaque. What does it say? Well, it's, it's telling about, we used, you know what the Civil War is? Yeah, a little bit. Why is the monument there? Well, this, I'm not going to try to go through all of that conversation, but we're living in a time that's different than when several of you lived and grew up and walked by that monument and what it might have meant to you then. And our kids are seeing different things than we saw when we were young people going by there. And they're asking different questions. I'd like for you to consider what's going on in their world today and how they're going to view things like that monument. Why did you, why did you leave it there? Things like that. Number two, I got a letter in the mail. It was addressed to me. I think you know a word that ends in hole and starts with A. That's the way it started. And yes, I too was called the N-word. I didn't count them. Could have been the same as Jackie's, I don't know. Maybe it was because I wrote letters to the editor, or maybe they heard me here give a few words at, at the last council meeting. The letter wasn't personally troubling to me because I know whoever wrote the letter has their own personal problems. And they were expressing the problems in their world. It was not a problem in my world. The problem was in their world. And that leads me to why I decided to put my name up tonight. It's because a gentleman a little bit earlier made a statement to this effect. Removing the monument is going to cause ill will. And when that was said, there was a murmur of, huh huh. First time I've heard any kind of comment from the audience. And that concerned me. If we're talking about, okay, leave it and get over it, it sounds to me like if it's removed, some people are not going to get over it very easily. And that concerns me. It's not going to be a win-win situation either way. Tough decision. Probably you've already decided how you're going to vote. But for you listening, if you're wanting the monument to stay, I think you need to also be able to say, well, if I want those people to get over it when it stays, maybe I need to think about getting over it if it's removed. Thank you. Any questions?
Nimrod Chapel and then Karen Leidens?
Thank you, thank you. Hi, I'm Nimrod Chapel, president of the Missouri State Conference of the NAACP, president of the Jefferson City branch for about a decade now. You know, I've had the pleasure of living in this community and I'm raising my kids here. And I was hesitant about speaking, and I'll tell you why. Because it seems like at a point, you can say things and end up saying too much. And I'm going to close with that, but let me just bring up another point. You may look here in the audience and notice a dearth of brown faces. Talked to a lot of people before we came, and I talked to a lot of people about this monument and why I'm concerned about it, and they related their concerns about their kids, about their experiences in this community, and about wanting something to change. But you know, one thing that hasn't changed is that there is still a fear. And isn't that the fear of public speaking, making your voice heard? It's the fear of retribution. What happens in your community when you take a stand for what you believe to be morally right? And let's just pretend for a second that this isn't about morality. This is about self-preservation for a whole group of people. We heard about some folks who received letters. That shouldn't happen in our community. Not because you addressed the City Council. There was no profane language used, there was no hate that was spread. But that's our community. And I tell you what, people here recognize that. There was the comment, Professor Dalton referred to it, about this is just going to stir up stuff. Let me tell you what, the stuff has already been stirred up, and it's been that way for a long time, and it's not about to go away. At the beginning of the summer, we had a few thousand people that were protesting, demonstrating, it's not really a protest, just a little demonstration, talking about the things that need to change in community. Well, this is one of the things that needs to change in this community. We ought to find a way, we have got to find a way to be able to get along. Part of that is not having a debate on who's human and who's not. Who shall have dignity and who will be respected and who won't? That rock says very plainly that if you're black, you're brown, you don't belong here. This is a place for other people, where they make decisions that affect your lives, control who you are and who you will not be allowed to be. And sometimes even erase your life. Those are other protests that are going on around the country. As a City Council, you're stewards of this community, not just of our tax money, but must set the tone. We've been looking for that on many levels, whether it's the state or the nation, but certainly here in Jefferson City. You're going to make a decision. I hope you make it today. Because we can keep coming back. I, I don't mind. I, I like coming here and being here with you. Gives me an opportunity to look at my elected officials and talk about important issues. I have to do that as president of the NAACP, so in essence, you're helping me do my job. But I don't think that we can continue to debate whether or not that marker dedicated to the Confederacy is or is not a relic of racist dogma, or that it even has a place in this community, any more than we can debate the very existence of a human being. This is not just a vote on whether or not it will be removed. This is a vote on who each of you are as individuals, as much as it is as our community. Now, if you believe that standing up and standing with those who erected that rock in '33 is the right thing, that might be a personal choice. But I want you to think larger about the implications for this community and the generations to come. Jefferson City ought not be a place where you can't use your First Amendment right to free speech without the threat of being called the most derogatory racially inflammatory term known in this country. It can't be that way for me, it can't be that way for our seniors, and it sure can't be that way for our next generation. Thank you.
Karen Leidens, and then I'll check the phone to see if anyone's wanting to speak. Thank you. Take this off so I can talk up here. I'm not close to anyone.
I just want to kind of speak from my heart a little bit tonight. And, you know, I went to Thorpe Gordon here in Jefferson City. Went to Lincoln University. I have had black friends since I moved here. I have an African-American goddaughter who is like a daughter to me. This is not, things are not always as it seems. I think that is how I opened last time I was here. I think we've heard from eloquent speakers, and I appreciate everyone's opinion. I, I really do. My motto, my car says love to you on my license plate. However, this is about a bigger picture, as we've heard before, about removing history that will not be passed on to my goddaughters and to other children if we, it's not, it's not always what it seems. And to remove this rock is to destroy history, contrary to the opposition that claims it's an anti-historical rock. That's what destroys. Instead of rewriting history to fit a political narrative, history should be kept to pass on to subsequent. history should be kept to pass on to subsequent generations. If this historical marker was not there, we would not be having this conversation and bringing to light our beautiful city's history. It's also causing us to pass this fact on that there was not an attack on Jefferson City, which again, I will say again, that's a miracle. It's a miracle that this city was not attacked. Do we not want that kept in our history? That this city was not attacked? It's not really even about the person. People can say all they want. It's glorifying a person. All it says is that General Price did not attack Jefferson City. And consequently sparing the lives of our city and the city's annihilation. And I just think much of us are better informed because of this and because the marker's there and if it's gone, there's going to be no reason to pass or no, no marker there to keep us talking. And I do myself, I want racism healed. But I want to know there's, I want y'all to know there's a deeper issue here. It's deeper than racism. It's called division. And division is the spirit that's trying to get in Jefferson City. It really is. And this whole thing, we want it to bring us closer, not to bring more division. I love all races. And I am just here to say what I said last time. You know, it's guise, it guises itself as racism. But it's really a spirited division. So I don't want to forget, like the Holocaust, like they're removing history in other nations. I don't want to forget that. And I don't want to forget the Civil War. And I went to Lincoln University. And as we know, our university is named after that. And they always say there's nothing behind this. But if I've been at the Capitol praying now for fifteen years, I ran for state representative, there's always an agenda behind it. When something starts like this, don't kid yourselves. There's an agenda, especially when someone says there's not. There's an agenda. And the next thing you know, we'll be in here trying to remove other things or change other things. So I just want again to, uh, to just say a prayer. Father, today we repent again, tonight for pride, fear and racism and for division. We forgive the evil that's done, been done in Jefferson City and on this land of all division, hatred and racism. But we choose to walk in love and unity. That's all I have to say. Amen.
Uh, Michael Brownstein had called that he would be calling in and he may want to speak, so if we could just check the phone. Mr. Brownstein? That's all I have for those that have signed up. If there's anyone else on the phone that wants to speak, if you could speak up.
Are you able to hear me?
Oh. Hello?
This is Michael Brownstein.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you for, um, letting me talk. I was at the planning commission meeting also. And I was also taken back by that statue letter. But I was more taken back when I started talking to other people who had received that letter. And that kind of division really bothered me. I started my planning speech differently. I spoke about why the statue never should have been there to begin with. And I quoted Robert E. Lee, who on two occasions, both times in letters, wrote that the Confederacy lost to the war. We should not make any monuments to them because we want to unify the country now. And by making monuments to the Confederacy, we're keeping the country divided. And that's what's happening now in twenty twenty across the country and in Jefferson City. Furthermore, I read a quote by Lynn Cheney, Dr. Lynn Cheney. That's Dick Cheney's wife. She was a former vice president, most of you know. I'm going to read her quotes to you right now. She said, these men were traitors. Now, the question was, should we take the Confederate statues down? And she said, these men were traitors. It makes sense that they should not be honored in the national landscape. Now, I did a lot of history studying on the general. I was frankly appalled. This man was not a nice person. And even to put his name on a plaque in a town anywhere, honor somebody who I felt was very, very evil. He allowed his men to loot. There's evidence that they were allowed to rape. They robbed and stole from southerners who were on the Confederacy side as much as the Union side. He didn't seem to know how to keep his men in line. He was just pitiful. He gave the Union a chance to fortify the Capitol because he was too lazy to ride a horse. And because he drove in what they call an ambulance, that slowed everybody down. And by the time they got near us, this town, the Union had pretty much fortified it. But there's a falsehood here. They did attack towns nearby. They did a lot of damage to towns nearby. Towels were wiped out pretty much. It was pretty much tore up really terribly bad. And Towels is real close to Jeff City and that's not a bad looking town. This man did not think about the beauty of this town. He did not save it because he thought it was beautiful. He took the stance that it might get whipped again because all along the way, he was losing men. Battle after battle, the Union was taking him down. I don't think he had enough guts to go forward and play with us. But I don't want to talk about the history because everybody in the council knows the history of this gentleman who should not be honored. Why the statue should come down is from my conversations I've been having with a lot of people. I did not receive a letter saying the N word thirteen times. But I've talked to many, many African-Americans in this town who told me white people look through them with the N word often. I'm not talking about two buddies who are playing with each other. I'm talking about using the N word in a negative way. And one of the African-American people told me this. She said, this is a sign of a cancer in the town. And cancers only get worse. And we keep the statue up here.
Am I getting a signal?
It'll stay worse and worse. She felt
Five minutes.
The monument has to come down.
Mr. Brownstein.
Any kind of life between the races.
Mr. Brownstein?
I agree with her. There's a problem. Yes?
Hi, uh, your five minutes of speaking time has expired.
Okay. Do I need to say a complete sentence?
You can complete your sentence.
Can I complete your sentence?
Yes.
Okay. I believe the statue should come down to kill the cancer of racism in this town. And that's what I stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have amended the agenda to allow to go ahead and take up Resolution twenty twenty twelve now so that with respect to everybody who's here, that we don't have to go through the rest of the agenda. So we are going to go ahead and take up, take that up now. So, uh, Mrs. Donaldson. Has been asked if there's a picture. I don't think there is one. I don't think there's one as part of the, uh, there's, as part of the, part of the presentation. So, Mrs. Donaldson, would you read the resolution?
A resolution authorizing the city to remove the UDC marker located at the intersection of Morrow and Fairmont.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. The title covers it. This resolution will authorize city staff to remove the UDC marker located at the city-owned right of way at the intersection of Morrow Drive and Fairmont Boulevard. Also directs that the, uh, monument or the marker be removed in its entirety and stored at a city-owned facility.
Any council questions, discussion or motion to approve? Councilman Fitzwater or? You can go ahead. Your hands up at the same time. So I'm not sure who's first. Councilman Ward?
I just wanted to make a motion to amend, uh, portion of the resolution. Um, in the, the very bottom now therefore, Fairmont is referred to as Avenue and it should be Boulevard like it is up in the earlier text. So I'd like to make a motion to amend that grammatical.
The, the motion is, is, is well-founded, uh, but, um, that would be, uh, corrected as a script for sale. So I, while the motion is, can, can be discussed and voted upon, it'd be corrected as a script for sale.
It was brought up in two previous council, uh, meetings, committee meetings and, I believe it hasn't been changed. So that's why I was just putting it on record that that needs to be changed.
We have it on record to change. So you're saying we don't need an actual motion though?
I, I don't believe so. That can be corrected as a script for sale.
Okay. Any other, uh, Councilman Fitzwater?
Yes, I, I appreciate all the comments and I do have an amendment that I'd at least like to discuss and present to the council. I've got copies. Send them down and then I'd like to speak to it. Give it, just a minute. I truly do appreciate everybody that has come in. This is, I don't know, meeting four or five. We've heard a lot of great testimony and I appreciate folks on both sides of this, of this issue. It's been said tonight that there's two ways to go. We can either approve or disapprove. And, you know, I think there continues to be a third way, which is can we find ground in the middle where we can all come together and try to get a win for both sides? So I've come up with a, a motion. We talked about it at committee meeting that essentially strikes some language in the resolution. And it does correct the, the issue in regard to Boulevard. But again, it talks about putting up a second marker storyboard approved by and added at the adjacent locations by the city council of the city of Jefferson to contextualize the UDC marker. And my comments are, and I have said this repeatedly in other forums and hopefully that has gotten through. I am in no way defending what the United Daughters of the Confederacy stood for. I mean, I think it's reprehensible, the letter that Mrs. Komen received, Mr. Dalton, I was not aware of his letter. So I think some of the activities, I was not here when, when that marker was placed. I can assure you if the marker was presented to us tonight as city council, I mean, it would go down, I'm guessing ten to zero. But we're not presenting with, the marker is already in place and what we're trying to do is figure out as a community how we are going to address that situation. I've received letters. We've all received letters and comments. We've talked to people on both sides of the issue and I've received them from people that I respect on both sides of the issue. People that I've known since I've been in this community. Some surprised me and we had some testimony at Public Works from a couple of individuals that supported leaving it there with the context of, let's talk about it and use it as an opportunity to teach. So I've had some surprises along the way also. And again, I do not condone what, what the Daughters stood for. But I think we can use it as an opportunity to educate. And again, I think with council having the, the final say on what those additional storyboards are, we can use it. And if it's a series of, you know, if there are going to be four or five other markers, I, I think that is incredible for our community. I think the one thing we cannot deny is that we have had a spirited debate in this community. And one thing, and I think Mr. Chapel indicated, for the most part in this community, we can do it as adults and we can have a discussion. And there was a meeting, I guess a forum last week that Mr. Chapel was involved with, former Sheriff White and other individuals talking about some other important issues in our community and mental health issues with our children. And there were a number of things laid out. I did not attend the forum online, but I did read as much as I could and I thought the newspaper did a great job of, of reporting on that. And I think there are issues within there that we can all sit down and say, yeah, that needs to be fixed in our community. But the thing that struck me about that process was it was a group of individuals coming together. And I realized they did not have maybe a marker issue on the table, but they had critical issues on the table. Everybody laid their cards out. And it was, my impression, well-received. And like I said, I, I looked through it and said, and they raised some really good issues and, and we can sit down as a community and talk about those issues. We have always been successful in this community when we talk about things. And I think this underground, each side gives up a little bit. But the important thing is that we give the community an opportunity to continue the dialogue. I mean, people that are all horrible names, I can't account for. That's not the way I grew up. I, I grew up in the, in the north and I remember my mother talking and repeating stories from my grandmother about the Underground Railroad being in our community. I mean, we celebrated the fact that, I mean, we were helping to eliminate slavery. Had two members of Congress in the, the mid eighteen hundreds that were very active in, in trying to eliminate. My history, and even though I've been called some names, other people get called names also. It does not relate to the, the history that, that I've had and, and want to project. But again, I'll say in, in my final closing that I do not support and I do not think it is accurate to label individuals that are opposed strictly to moving the monument as automatically supporting the, the other side. I think it's reprehensible the types of things that that organization was doing, whether, you know, I, I asked the, I guess the sole surviving member of the Winnie Davis chapter at the last meeting, had they renounced it. I have not gone back to check. She did not answer the question, but I find it hard to believe that there are members of that group that support that today, but I can't account for what they thought in, in the mid nineteen hundreds and certainly the mid eighteen hundreds. But I think this amendment gives us an opportunity to bring some healing to the community. Allow us to address this very serious issue, put some education out and all walk away feeling that we've had an impact on this very critical issue. So, thank you very much.
So, so I, I admire, uh, President, uh, Councilman Fitzwater's uh, effort to achieve a win-win by placing another plaque or some context with the marker to tell an historically more accurate story. But it's been eighty seven years that we've had this one uncontested, no misleading narrative. And the proposal is to add some context and somehow that will make things right. And I just don't see that as a win-win. I do think the marker represents an important part of history that should never be forgotten. You need to remember how, after so much sacrifice to preserve the Union and enslavement, slavery, nevertheless, white supremacy and racism became entrenched in the fabric of the nation. This marker is part of that ugly, historic story. After its removal, I think the marker needs to be placed within that context. Perhaps in a museum source history, it's appropriately understood and not ever repeated.
Thank you, Councilman Lester. And I should also back up to Councilman Fitzwater's proposed amendment to see if there's any interest in moving that forward.
Yeah, I, I did offer it as, as a motion. So, yeah, your point.
So we have a motion.
So, you're, uh, Mayor, as a, as a just point of procedure, so there needs to be- So, you're, uh, Mayor, as a, as a just point of procedure, so there needs to be a motion to take up the resolution or the original resolution? And then there can be amendments or sorry, motions to amend that resolution. So first there needs to be a motion to, to take up the, the original resolution.
Keeping us on track. And is there a motion to approve the original resolution?
I move to approve the original resolution.
We have a motion in second. So we've been in our discussion phase and we have a motion for this amendment that Councilman Fitzwater has put before us. So we have a motion. Is there a second for the amendment? We have a motion in second. Further discussion on potential amendment. Councilman Triver.
I agree with what's been said about individuals who I label as cowards and who are despicable because they won't even sign their name to letters that they send to individuals. And that's exactly what they are. But when you look back at history, I had two great grandfathers that were labeled as traitors. And they were labeled as traitors because they served the American Revolution. And they were traitors to England. As were our founding fathers. They were labeled as having committed treason against the mother country of England. We label those that fought for the South as traitors. But we must not forget that they too were Americans. Just like we are today. And although it's a wonderful thing that our Union was preserved, here again, we cannot forget some things in history. I'm a firm believer that we do need more markers and monuments in the city of Jefferson. I conduct many tours around the town, bus tours that come in here. And I take them around to various locations within our city and point out various things. One of the things that I point out is not only the Monaco home, which I remember as a, a young man, way before Mr. Monaco was there. I had a good friend whose daddy was a minister and they rented that house. But I stopped at the marker. It's not a monument, it's a marker. On Royal Drive. I remember that as a young man. When I walked from the old Royal Heights to the new Royal Heights in 1955. We made that stop at McPlon Park. Had a sack lunch, went on to the new school. My father, being an American history teacher and a teacher of sociology, he first told me about that marker and what it stood for. He told me how despicable and how horrible slavery was. I haven't forgotten the lessons my father told me. The lessons he told me about the Civil War.
Granting knowledge that records and explains past events and creates an established record. By contrast, uh, the UDC's monument was intended to be anti-historical neo-confederate propaganda. That's what it was when it showed up here. Uh, and that's what it remains today. And there's no amount of time that could pass that would ever transform it into history. The UDC's mission and their open propaganda campaign to celebrate the Confederacy, to honor the chivalry and bravery of its leaders and soldiers, and to rewrite the causes of the Civil War in terms more favorable to the South in hopes that it may rise again one day, is amply documented and it is not seriously discredited. So having their anti-historical displays accepted as alternatives to the verified historical record was precisely the goal of their propaganda campaign. And allowing this plaque to remain in the name of preserving history would pervert the definition of the word. And it would grant the UDC and similar neo-confederate groups an unconscionable victory. That they alone would enjoy. There would be no other winners of that regardless of whatever might be installed on that plaque. Like, uh, my friend Councilman Triber, uh, I have, uh, several generations back, uh, at least one traitor to England. Uh, and I appreciate, uh, Councilman Triber's, uh, friendship and his, uh, work to help me get involved with people similarly situated. Uh, also like him, I have, uh, folks who fought in the Civil War, um, in my family, uh, but like a lot of families with ancestors living across Tennessee in the 1800s. We have a few relatives who fought for the Confederacy. And at least one who went to fight for the Union. Thinking about those painful events and our place in them isn't new to us, but you know, when some folks look back on their family trees, uh, they don't see rebel soldiers or UDC members or Klansmen. But ancestors kidnapped and sold into slavery, raped, torn from their families, lynched, denied the right to vote with decent education and equal accommodations, public accommodations, to equal justice under the law. People who were humiliated, beaten, murdered for simply demanding that they not be treated differently due to the color of their skin. These are things I will never have to explain to kids as having directly threatened the lives of our relatives or stifling our family's growth and advancement in this country. And most of us won't. If we are to consider the feelings expressed by members of our community on this issue on both sides. And that's largely what's presented by, um, opponents of this resolution is essentially, you know, in many cases it comes down to their feelings either about their ancestors or about their connection to the neighborhood or the community growing up or, um, deep connections with their childhoods. I, I, I let's consider, consider everyone's feelings. But you have to listen to what people are telling us. So you have that on the one hand, you have this attachment to uh, admitted propaganda in historical clothing. And then you have people telling us about deeply rooted, generations-long hurt that since childhood for them, this marker has represented. And I simply don't understand how you can put those things on an equal footing and say that anything that would ever attempt to compete with this plaque. In any way would weigh against that. And if there's any weight to the plaque, that would match the true history of what happened. So whether or not our local leaders knew what the UDC was up to in 1933, and there's some indication that obviously they did. We know now. The people in this room know now. Our entire community knows now. And we sitting here have a responsibility to no longer promote the cause of the Confederate States of America by publishing their propaganda on ground that belongs to all of the residents of this community. Including of course, our neighbors whose ancestors, the Confederacy tore the nation apart to keep in bondage. This marker has never been and can never be history. The boys in gray were wrong. And we shouldn't promote their cause anymore. This marker has to be removed. I strongly support this resolution. Thank you.
Any other, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Any reflections? Uh, Councilman Hesse?
Thank you. I'll just briefly add a couple of comments and, and I think that Councilman Hensley echoed some of that by saying a lot of folks, I think here tonight, if you talk about what the middle ground is, to me, it's an accurate portrayal of the Civil War history of this community. And that is, this conversation has unpacked that for a lot of people who weren't familiar with it. And I think to Councilman Triber's point about those tours that he gives and, you know, on that bus, you know, what are you communicating to the folks who are visiting the community? You're probably, I would guess telling them the story about the, the, the Union forces here and the efforts of the freed slaves and the German immigrants to stand up to the Confederacy. And so I look at and say, the middle ground in my eyes is to celebrate that. To collectively in 2020, come together as a community and write that. And I know that to me, contextualizing something that's been in existence doesn't get us there. And sometimes I look at it and say, you sort of have to wipe the slate clean and come together and say, okay. And I've heard that theme in multiple meetings of this and committees and commissions. But there, I think there is a shared desire. I, I, Mr. Lamore has told that story a couple of times about me and a young boy. And I think that, you know, accurate markers that communicate this community's history and its role with the Civil War will do the same thing. Um, and, and I believe that if we do that in a collective effort, that, that school teachers may want to take kids to do that, to tell the story. Whatever we decide tonight, the Civil War is still getting taught in school tomorrow. And, and, and I always think about, when we talk about erasing history, is that everybody still learns about this. And, and, and it's not as though we wipe that now and it's clean. You know, there's no hidden agenda. There, there's no what's next. The agenda for me is simply to make sure that as a community, we can discuss and debate issues that sometimes make us all a little uncomfortable. And come together with a, a decision that we may not all agree with at that moment, but that we can make a path forward of. And so I didn't necessarily completely disagree with Councilman Fitzwater's amendment. It's just for me, it's not about contextualizing that. It's about the broader issue of saying, let's write this accurately and correctly for what it needs to be. And let's celebrate that. There are some really, really talented, intelligent people in this room tonight who have a, a personal connection to the history of this community. Who have come to gain it through knowledge and research and reading and, and visiting sites. And I would love for us as a council and a community to, to certainly tap into that and, and build upon that. But it feels pretty clear that the particular, you know, whether it's the word on the plaque, it's, it is divisive. It really churns up some harsh feelings. I can't place myself in machines of folks who receive those letters or what that's like, and I certainly won't try to. But I look at it and say like, let's remove this. And let, let's move on to what's next. And what I mean by what's next, it's not about tearing something else down. It's about us as a community becoming together. And those that want to be a part of that working together to make sure that we tell that story correctly. That we find a way to celebrate that history and stand together on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, deliberations? Councilman Ender?
Yeah, I'm, I'll make it quick because I know, um, a lot has been said. And I, and I agree with a lot of what John and Ken and others have said. And I think even Jan hit on it and Jay Barnes hit on it. Um, you know, talk about history and telling a story, you have to look at what was the organization that's trying to tell the story with this marker? And that's the UDC. This is the same organization that issued textbooks that were taught across the South that depicted slavery as not being a bad thing. You know, and so we have to look at it from the context of who's telling the story. And that's the thing that, that bothers me a lot is, is who's telling the story. Um, their ideologies, their mission statement, you know, how they're trying to preserve Confederate ideas, that's, that's an issue. Um, so for that, that's one of the main reasons why I'm in agreement with a lot of what's being said in that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ward, just real quick too, um, I know everyone's time is precious and I would just like to echo too, some of the things that have been said by my fellow councilmen here. I, I really, um, am passionate about historic preservation. Um, I moved here in Jefferson City in 1999 for, um, Catholic education for our children. And I became very concerned about demolitions that were occurring in the city of historic structures. So I became very involved in historic preservation, serving on, uh, Historic City of Jefferson's board, serving as, uh, vice president and secretary, serving on the city's historic preservation commission, um, working to strengthen our demolition ordinance. Um, I also restored two historic properties, um, one on the national register. And this marker, even though it isn't a historic district that is on the national register, it can be removed. Um, it's not a contributing feature, um, of the district. It's not a contributing feature of the district. And unless something is being demolished and that's on the National Register, it can be. What can be built on that, on the site, this can't be federal funding. So regardless of that, I, I mean, I share with Councilman Schreiber a passion for historic preservation. And if this was truly just a historical marker, I would not be in favor of removing it. I have heard that this has been called a symbol of peace and a marker of peace and a monument of peace. It is not that. It was not placed there for that reason. So therefore, that is the reason why I chaired, I sponsored this resolution. In my frustrations from everything that I've heard this entire summer regarding this marker, I have spoken to my Black friends who have not been vocal, and I understand why they're not vocal. They, they don't have a voice, because this is what happens when they come forward. And when I express my frustrations and concerns with them, simple answer. Well, let me know what I go through every day. I don't know what it's like to be Black. I was raised to be respectful, and my dad once told us he could not be a Black man because he is such a proud man. And he could not live every day of being looked at and judged for walking down the street, for dressing a certain way, for going into a store. And our parents opened our eyes because that's what is going on. And we need, in our daily kindness and our daily interactions, to realize that and make it better. I apologize to those who have received letters of hate. And I just hope this is the night that makes history, that we can move forward more together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to say, when, when UDC placed this marker in Jefferson City in 1933, it was part of a very broad campaign that had been going on since the 1890s to vindicate what they believed was Confederacy valor and fighting for a just and right cause to preserve the Southern way of life, including white supremacy. The marker's stood here for eighty-seven years. To me, aptly, it's been young people who question the appropriateness of the marker. They ask, why does the city continue to sponsor a marker placed in the public square when it was part of a patently racist organization's propaganda campaign? I've heard some arguing that removing the marker is by name to cancel culture. That somehow its removal is a slippery slope that will lead to tearing down other statues and monuments to historic leaders like Jefferson, Washington. Those on the council who vote to remove this marker, some of the strongest advocates for preserving such historic monuments and statues. This not, marker is not in the same category with those historic memorials. It's not even in the same universe of categories as this, as though. The slippery slope has not been discussed directly is that the UDC marker helped Greece, which led our society into a fair racism and Jim Crow laws, the negative impact of which is still with us. That's why it needs to be removed. Like I said before, I, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to it being placed in a more appropriate context that reflects that history that needs to be remembered of how racism got perpetuated in our society.
Thank you. Any further deliberation? Not, we'll take up the original resolution. Any none? Roll call, please. Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Nay.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Resolution passes. And I do appreciate everyone's time. I know there's been several meetings, and we appreciate that. And I think what's more important than the marker itself is that we will not allow it to divide us. And I'm extremely thankful for the fact that in Jefferson City, that we can have these discussions in a respectful manner. So appreciate that very much. I want to thank everyone for that. So we will take a five-minute break. Okay, bill's introduced, 2020-37.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J, Parking Prohibited by the Modification of Bel Air Drive. Mr. Smith?
My apologies. I was expecting a recess after that. Don't have this up yet. Just a second. Yes, Mayor, as the clerk stated, this bill would authorize the, uh, or actually would permit the parking in an area near Bel Air School. This was an issue that was brought to the commission from the principal of Bel Air, Bel Air School and was taken up by the Transportation and Traffic Commission where approval was recommended. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? 2020-38.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by the Modification of Parking and Loading Zones Adjacent to Morrell High School.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, as the clerk mentioned, this would modify the current bus loading area by, uh, Morrell, yes, Morrell High School, uh, to allow for parking, short-term parking through the day in that bus zone. Uh, this was an issue brought to the commission from the school district and was taken up by Transportation and Traffic Commission, which, with approval being recommended. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? 2020-39.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Stockman Construction Corporation, the amount of $108,667.60 for Leonard Drive Stormwater Replacement Project. Mr. Smith?
Yes, this bill would authorize a contract for some stormwater improvements in the areas of Sioux and Leonard. Uh, the staff is recommending the best bidder, which was, in this case, not the lowest bidder. Uh, this issue was discussed at the Public Works and Planning Commission meeting, uh, most recent, and was brought forward to the council from there. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? 2020-40.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Arc Nexus LLC in the amount of $174,973 for the airport parking lot project and to supplementally appropriate additional funds from the airport fund balance in FY 2021. Mr. Smith?
Yes, this bill would authorize a contract with Arc Nexus LLC to improve our parking lot. This work is in association with our public, public-private partnership with the new airport administration building, which is currently under construction, and would also repair some flood damage that we received most recently. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? 2020-41.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the FY 20 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating additional funds within the general fund to allow for the replacement of six hail-damaged police vehicles.
Chief Trader?
Thank you. This bill would authorize a supplemental appropriation to the 1920 purchase of vehicles account to allow for spending of the general fund balance, fund balance, fund balance, to replace six police patrol vehicles, which have been or will be designated a total loss as a result of hail damage sustained in March of 2020. I also believe there might be a motion.
We have a request from Councilman Graham?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. After further discussion with, uh, Mr. Heisler and Chief, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules tonight and take up 2020-041 for our final reading tonight.
We've had a request to suspend the rules. Is there any objections? Seeing none, we will take up 2020-41.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending FY 20 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriation additional funds within the general fund to allow for the replacement of six hail-damaged police vehicles.
Any further deliberation or questions? Councilman Hesse?
I do have a question. Are we receiving any sort of insurance settlement for the six vehicles that are being replaced?
Yes, we've received, um, two payments for two vehicles, which have already been designated a total loss in the amount of $22,050. Uh, the, we anticipate six total will be designated a total loss, and the funds received from the insurance company for the additional four vehicles will also be committed or committed to the general fund, reserve fund.
Having not cross-referenced, um, the, the vehicle list you provide in the budget process, can I draw the assumption that these six vehicles would have shown up on a replacement list? Either they were this year or what these are just here?
There, there's no overlap between, coincidentally, there's no overlap between the ones that will be replaced, uh, as a result of deliberations by the council this summer and the ones that sustained the hail damage in March.
I, well, I guess my point was, this is essentially replacing six vehicles. Was that list every year that was fifteen, twenty-one vehicles? But I don't know how many we get this budget cycle. Was that seven? Five? Maybe gone down to sixteen. This will now essentially take another six of them off the list?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, short answer is, those six that were requested to be replaced now are on that list. That was presented this summer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or deliberations? Uh, roll call, please. Kimna? Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Vote? Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Bill passes. Bill's pending. We've already taken up nothing on the informal resolution, 2020-14.
A resolution accepting CARES funds from the Federal Transit Administration.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, uh, this resolution would authorize the acceptance of a grant from the Federal Transit Administration for a little over $2.3 million in CARES Act relief funds. The intention is for those grant funds to be expended over the next three years. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right.
Make them. I don't have, I don't have a question. I would make a motion to approve the resolution.
All right. We have a motion. Second and further discussion on the resolution? Oh, in favor, or roll call, I'm sorry. Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Vote?
Aye.
Ward? Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2020-15.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting a CBD 2020 action plan and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Ms. Sensi?
Hi. Um, the 2020 action plan is, is tied to 2020 federal fiscal year dollars. Um, it's actually, the implementation date is actually going to take place in 2021. Uh, I'll cut to the chase and get to the budget table. Oh, I can't. Um, if you guys have any questions about how we solicited public comments and the, and the whole process of how we do the action plan, please feel free to ask.
And I would just interject for a moment that Ms. Sensi did do a thorough presentation at the Public Works and Planning Committee meeting, so it's been vetted once by the committee process. So I don't want folks to think that you're dipping things into the council or some members of the council have seen already.
I feel like people want to see the budget anyway. So we have our planned budget. Um, we do, we are receiving a little over $306,000 as far as our, or our 2020 federal allocation. We also anticipate, um, roughly the $78,000 in program income that we are paying back to DED for the 408 Lafayette. Um, that's going to turn around, circle, and come back in through our entitlement fund. Um, we also have some FY 19 funds that are going to roll over. Um, so if you look through your packet, you can't see it very well on the screen. Um, but we are going to fund roughly 25 down payment assistance applications, um, five minor home repair applications, which are up to $5,000 for exterior repairs. Um, we are going to, uh, fund infrastructure improvements, which tend to be sidewalks, um, for a little under $250,000. $80,000 in demolition, that'll be about four structures, um, depending on, um, the cost and the size. Um, and then we have, do have some, a 20% admin cap of each year. Um, so what would happen after council, um, we, if, once you vote to approve and adopt the action plan, um, we submit to HUD. Um, they do have some time to do their own public process, and then once they adopt our plan, they release our 2020 allocation funds in the, in the, in an award. Um, and then we start implementing, starting in 2021. If that'll open it up to any questions.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Schreiber? Vote? Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. 2020-16.
A resolution approving the St. Mary's Hospital Community Improvement District's Resolution Number 2020-9.
Just a moment.
Thank you. The Old St. Mary's Hospital Community Improvement District Board of Directors has submitted a slate of successor directors for its board of directors, um, under the CIT Act and the agreement, uh, controlling the St. Mary's Hospital Community Improvement District. Uh, the city council, or the mayor, with the consent of the city council, would approve the, uh, sorry, the consent directors, uh, the consent directors, or sorry, successor directors, named by the St. Mary's CID, uh, board of directors include, uh, Gina Thonan, John Sheenan, and Margie Miller, to serve as successor directors, each serving a term of four years. So this is the system of the CIT Act and the development agreement controlling, uh, the CID.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any questions for the session? Roll call, please. Vote? Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Resolution passes. Resolution 2020-17.
A resolution approving the Fire Service Mutual Aid Agreement between Cole County and the city.
Chief Stokil?
Yes, this is a, an update to an existing mutual aid agreement we have with the Cole County Fire Protection District. Uh, very standard language here that reflects what is in state statute already. Uh, we're getting nothing out of the ordinary with this. The last time we ratified this or brought this before council was in 2001. And so they just brought it to us and wanted it to be updated and reaffirmed. So that's what this resolution represents. Happy to answer any questions.
Schreiber? Further discussion? Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Vote? I didn't. Resolution passes. All right. Item 16, presentations from the gallery. Anyone sign up? On the presentation? No, no, okay. Item 17, any council staff discussion?
I will sign in.
1910 to approve the 20, or 10, 15, 10, October 5th possession minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Wiseman? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
I'm staying.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes, and we have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, everyone. Good night, everybody.